Two, we got a couple right aways there. You and I talked yesterday, one's already been signed off. And the other one seems to be a new one. It seems pretty cut and dried. Go ahead.
I think it's the same right away, they just had it changed. Is that what he said?
They changed it, is what they done?
He said he modified it.
So, and they didn't get that modification back to the road program?
From what I understand, this is the modification?
The new.
And it's hoping to be approved?
Okay.
But I don't know, I haven't had a conversation with him about it because I thought he'd be here today.
And the plan show it's overhead, you want to look at it?
Yeah, it's overhead, so.
So I didn't know it was modification when I talked to the state Kevin. Give you a second.
What's the applicant's name on the first one?
It's all Jake Stevens, it's Newson, Sohler.
The only thing I ask is, I've seen several where they send them to you once and then two weeks later they're sending them to the different names. This is actually one of those.
Okay. We, you don't have to go over that right in the middle of the meeting if you want to Kevin.
I just wanted to see what was different.
We make the... Make the decision in our meeting tomorrow anyways.
Well, it says, is this permit requested for an additional modification of existing permit? It says no.
Then we don't know if Mr. Stevens is coming today for him to explain to, if it is modification.
Well, unless it's absolutely crystal clear to Kevin, I would say we table telling Mr. Stevens.
I don't see, I don't, I have to talk to him because I don't see any differences on this draft print. I mean, the height over the road, all of those things are regulated by...
By the PUCM.
By more strict utility commission than Lake County does, but I don't see the difference, so I had to ask. Doesn't come out.
I'll let you keep my copies there if you...
Yeah, that's fine.
If you want to get questions of Jake.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because I'm with Dan if it's not.
It doesn't jump off the page, it did yesterday actually when I was... The difference between the initial one and this other one, so I had to ask, I had to ask.
Okay, so we'll hope to continue to go on calling, they'll take care of it by tomorrow. So the AOC Road Program, we have an invoice that we've received from AOC. AOC has asked for the counties to step up with an additional payment as they've realigned theirself, reorganized theirself with some costs that were not allowable from the road fund at AOC level. Dan, did you want to mention any, any better overview of that?
Well, probably not, not necessarily. The counties, thirty-six counties in Oregon, have what I believe to be an obligation to our road, our Oasis program, our Hunter in there. And these bills to each, that each county have received reflect that. It's a responsibility that we share, all share equally except for the actual price, but equally on a percentage basis. And I believe we should move forward with making something up to AOC.
Okay, and it's a one-time assessment. And it was funds borrowed from the road program without prior board authorization.
Yes.
And so it's one-time increase, the cost is $6,799.55. That's Lake County's share of all thirty-six counties. So, yes, we do have, AOC is a very good association, very supportive. We need to pay this, do you want to just carry this on until tomorrow?
Kevin, does have something.
And you may know the answer, just of, how was, how was that assessed by road mileage?
How was it assessed?
Yeah, each county is going to pay their share of this.
You know Kevin, honestly, I don't.
They didn't go over that at our last meeting either.
I don't know. They typically assess us based, our annual assessments based formula, and I think they did the same. I think they use the same formula, but I don't know the answer to that.
I don't either, and I think part of their regular formula is population part of the formula differently. And what did I believe?
But based upon, I will say this much, based upon what I believe to be a ballpark figure of what is owed in restitution. This, this is a small amount.
It's comparison to a lot of counties.
Yes, it's more key thing with what...
That's all I'm thinking.
Yeah, and it's, it will be a general fund expenditure, it will not be, we won't use road dollars to pay that.
Road dollars. Okay, so that'll be carried for tomorrow.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Oh. Okay, so you guys can take it out of the hall if you want to.
Sorry, no we're not.
Okay. Next item that you have is, the... That's all we have for you Kevin.
Yeah, I didn't have any items, I just wanted to hear.
I was going back, I looked at my agenda, I was going back to the...
I just wanted to hear the discussion on the AOC and this permit, so I'll follow up with this.
Okay, and I think it'd be good, based on our little conversation yesterday, it sounded like the Oasis group wasn't necessarily seeing it quite the same way, maybe I missed something.
Well, I, I better gather some more facts before I just say outright, but the fall conference that we had was discussed with us or pitched at us a little differently than that, so I just need to follow up.
Well, I think the main thing you're going to be able to share with them is that the county boards, the county boards, commissioners see it, it's their obligation, and they're going to take care of it.
To fix that problem.
Fix the problem.
The question I had, and I don't know if we got it yet, was they talked about our membership, our county road membership going up, and discussed it in a form that made it sound like it was attached to this. And at the time, that didn't make sense to me, so I just want to follow up one more time.
And you did, yeah, that would be good to follow up, just to why it's going up.
Yeah, that would be quite interesting because if that's for the funds or...
Until yesterday, when I got more of the background as to how, why, and who and all that, and fully understand what they were telling us there, so I, tomorrow, I think that in fact means a lot of those people, so I'll, I'll find out.
Yeah, that's, that was the, Kevin mentioned, and I thought, oh, because I don't have two sides.
Yeah, obviously.
I need to say one or the other right now because I, it was in October and...
And none of us sat in Oasis meetings at the conference in November, I, you didn't go to the end of it, so I don't know. And you weren't there, so I don't know if there was anything discussed at AOC.
No, it was at, it was at our fall, it was at our fall deal in October or something.
We'll find out clearly whether for...
Yeah.
...a rate increase, I may be able to deliver good news to them.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right, we come back to Mr. Gray Gray. Whatever time it takes.
It's been a long wait.
No.
No, so I called him, I'll talk about him. He was in and then he left.
What is it you just reviewed us?
So that's...
The pressure.
Right, so just change that default minimum amount. So page five. Section two at the bottom.
Ann talked to Dave, and she said he concurred with our, our language here about having a memo about maybe add alarm taxes described in section fourteen-one. Basically calculated out for the rest of the years that are on the agreement. Dave also had a, a good point in that if we didn't do that, the state would want to do a, well, would likely want to do a re-eval, you know, do a valuation of the project at the time of default. If we went on something else, and he said, and if he didn't have any revenue, if the project was upside down, your valuation on that project wasn't going to be very high. So his, I think what he was saying was the county would be better off agreeing to an amount that's part of the SIP agreement that the state can't come in and change later. Does that make sense?
So at least you got... So he's saying, say it happened in year one, just for, for the rains. And it was a $500 million project of value. It doesn't, it would lose all but $50 million plus three percent annually of that value because it wasn't producing revenue.
It wasn't producing any revenue or, or... Yeah, yeah, because, well, I mean, the modules themselves, I mean, year one is kind of the extreme example. The year one, I mean, at day one, they lose thirty percent because of the investment tax credit. So the year one modules, you know, after being out in the field for a year, you're basically down to salvage value. For somebody to come, it would cost them more to come pull them off of the, pull them off the racks and take them somewhere else, so. So the value of the project is the revenue, so if you lost all the revenue, your project's not worth anything.
All right.
I can see that.
So my own, well, you're good, I'm good on that then. Thank you guys for working on that.
Yeah.
The exhibit A and B that we have, is that the correct exhibit for this? Okay, that's the only other thing I had to make sure that we had everything there.
The other thing, the last thing I'd like to, unless you have more questions. So where we go from here, assuming you guys are going to approve this to her, is once we have an agreement in place with the county, then we go to the state, and there's an application process packet that we have to fill out with the state. And they're, they're the ones that actually give the stamp of approval for the actual, the SIP as a state program. So, you know, they actually give the stamp of approval. So we'll include the, the, we can't go to them until we have an agreement with you guys. So the, once we have the agreement, we'll fill out that paperwork, give it, send it in, and then they'll process it through their, through the business organ, through Larry, and then they'll stamp it, and then the program will be, it'll be official, as everyone's saying. So that's the, that's the process.
So when this all goes into part of your other second process too?
No.
No, it does not, okay.
It tangentially goes in because we, you know, they ask us about community impact, you know, as part of the overall, as some of the general questions, but the actual agreement doesn't go into the, the SIP agreement. I mean, to the FSEC process, FSEC is a land use process.
So I have one other question, Todd, assuming, you know, and you guys have calculated all this, assuming this gets signed tomorrow and you start the process with the state, what is the real timeframe for getting full approvals that you could build on? What do you guys estimate it's going to take to get?
Yeah, so we're estimating, I mean, the big one is getting our site certificate for NSEC. And we anticipate having that in the fall of nineteen, so about ten months from now. And, but in parallel with that, we're also really, you know, going through all these other processes, so. We think that we're going to have approvals, everything ready to go, probably spring, spring to summer twenty-twenty. We're going to do some initial construction, and some, there's a safe harbor to get the tax credit. You know, we have to break around by the end of twenty-nineteen for the big tax credit, so we're going to break around by the end of twenty-nineteen. And so, but that could mean finding five percent of the equipment. That could mean putting up some exterior loads, you know, doesn't necessarily mean...
Right, well, you had said earlier at the beginning that soft break in late two thousand and eighteen.
So twenty, we, we think that, well, it's our, and our goal is to be under full construction, you know, by the end of twenty-twenty, so, summer twenty-twenty.
Part of that reason, I'll just clarify my question a little bit, to ask that sometimes people ask that aren't involved in these things and that they can be complicated, as to why would you, speaking of us, agree to something three years before they plan to actually have, producing something? And it's a process.
It is a process, and what I tell people is, you know, actually building the project is the last step.
Yeah.
And so we have to have this in place for financing. You know, but also with investors looking around at this project, they, they need to know this part of their evaluation of the project. What, you know, what are we going to be, you know, what are we signing up for for property taxes?
Well, you clearly stated in order to start the state process that I assume it'll start real soon.
Yeah.
You have to have this in place. And given the timeframe for all the different approvals, the soft ground break of late in two thousand and nineteen kind of fits with our timeline.
See, and when we, and when we do that, we'll have been into this process for, you know, two, four years. So, you know, I think a lot of people think of the development kind of starts when you break ground, but it's really, it's really, you know, way prior to that.
Yeah.
So, that's all right.
Okay.
They're going to the airport first?
Yes.
Looking forward to that.
Yeah.
All right, and Dave stepped out, I just want to go to the airport, Sohler Park, you go. Right away while you were here.
That's state notes.
Okay.
Sorry.
What were we going to talk about with the airport?
It's just an amendment.
Just amendment number one, Laura, Laura is singing.
Oh, for the lease.
It's for the pilot agreement that takes off the valuation and makes it a simple seven thousand per megawatt. And then it extends the timeline a year. And it's exactly the same as it was before.
See, they actually do step it out sometimes.
Yeah.
Is that where I'm supposed to say that's a good thing? You knew what I was going to say, you read my mind, Todd.
No, Lori gets way more down than I do.
Lori and Dave knows it and exchanging emails on the total annual, about your, the math wasn't working out, but, you know, I don't see that.
Yeah, I was looking. Because that's what I had followed too.
The insight to that, Melanie?
Well, so honestly, I just scanned and modified the existing contract and changed the dates, and I changed the assessment rate per his directions. He didn't discuss any other changes.
Well, and this is on, this is on the lease, and it's not on the actual pilot, so that was what they were emailing back and forth, was that annual payment on the pilot, so.
So it's amendment number one to the payment with tax agreement at airport Sohler, so that's what I have in front of me.
The lease agreement, yes.
Okay. And... So we can carry that forward for tomorrow.
Yep.
And then one last comment on the SIP agreement. The next part that the county has to do is get the seventy-five percent of the taxing districts by and how we distribute the community service fee. So that's on us to make sure that seventy-five percent of the tax code area districts agree to how we distribute it.
Minus the $100 million valuation, we don't get a second.
So, so with that said, Ann, I guess I thought that we're, you'd reached out and everything, there's no response back and everything, that that showed there's support, but we have to have something actually in writing from them.
I think that probably best.
So if we agree to this tomorrow and we don't get seventy-five percent, what would that be?
That means that the community service fee is $800,000, end of story. How that gets distributed through taxing districts is up for negotiation.
Okay.
But seventy-five percent of the districts have to agree to that distribution.
And what we look forward is it's the normal
Yeah.
distribution rate that is done through our tax office.
Right.
Plus if there's any new tax districts formed, then they become part of the formula.
Now, I'd be speaking at a school, but I think that the county fund is like seventy-three percent or something like that, so. You know, I think you only need one of, one of the other ones to kind of...
Well, that's what I was going to say, because I think we, for our records, because we throw that number out there, it's not like we have four taxing districts and three of them have to agree, it's seventy-five percent of the value of the value.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have follow-up on that, it's okay, go ahead with the tomorrow. Thank you. And are you the one following up on that?
Yeah, I got to figure out how we're going to get that approval. I mean, it's going to be a joint meeting somehow with, or maybe the highest next value district would be, which minus this whole district. I'm not sure.
Well, they would never, they could never be part of the conversation anyway.
Yes, they could, they could have been. They could have been at the distribution of the community service fee, absolutely.
Yeah, they can't, they can't be part of the seventy-five percent negotiation.
They can't be part of this negotiation, can they?
No.
Okay, but could they be part of the...
If I, if I kept them in, we didn't do the separate thing, they couldn't be a... So I'm not going to be here tomorrow.
Good luck, I hope things work out for you tomorrow.
I do too, so.
I've not seen, no, I haven't, unless there's something comes up, Todd, I haven't found any issues that I can't support it.
All right, good. And then, so I'll just execute it, no, execute it, send it down, send it fresh out.
Thank you for being here, Todd.
Sure.
Appreciate it, and thanks for you guys working, probably took a break.
I'm sure, happy to do it. You know, not every county's that flexible.
Yeah, our meetings are pretty, pretty flexible.
Yeah.
So, okay, getting back to our agenda, apologize for jumping all over the place there, not following well myself. The non-disturbance, subordination agreement with Newson Sohler. What I see is this is the same as what we've done in the past. We have, are there two of them here?
Uh, I'm sorry, three.
Three of them here, they're, now I found them. These have all been sent to legal counsel, legal counsel's review. And this is, they're basically, or the mineral on the manuals in this, meaning that they're being non-disturbance from the amount of time that development is here, correct?
Yeah, forty years after the date signed.
Okay. So I guess Kevin, on the next part of the right away, Kevin's following up on that after the meeting. I don't know, you might follow up with Jake Stevens, you've already been trying to do that to see if they intended to be here or come here tomorrow, or if they just want to go on through with this, so. Do you have questions on that?
Well, Commissioner, I, no, I need to go back and apologize. I did not look deep enough on my pile, you know, where it says airport Sohler amendment one, it is on the pilot. It is this conversation they had, the other is the lease agreement, which...
That's what I thought Dave was sitting here for.
Yeah.
You guys said it was another Dave.
Yeah. Well, the, this, the pilot agreement would be, Dave Knowles.
Right.
The lease agreement is...
Okay, so we can go back to that. So the payment, we have the payment with the taxes, and the other one is, let me get through my pile. Not in that pile, it's been in this one here. On the memorandum, memorandum of lease, that's what you're talking about?
The, that was the one I was talking about that I thought was an amendment. The airport Sohler pilot is the amendment number one, which I didn't see in my pile until just now. Which I believe is just the language without either Lori or Dave Knowles here. I think it was just simply put that the nameplate is here, that's what the seven thousand is based on. And they were doing dollar and cent calculations, and it wasn't jiving up each one of them on what that was, and it was just, I thought that the amendment was just simply doing what it says here, the fee of the seven thousand turns to creative nameplate capacity, end of story.
Yeah, and that's where their numbers, they either won't, they haven't been calculated correctly, but it's forty-seven point two five megawatt.
Yeah, and...
Times seven thousand makes it relatively simple.
Yep.
Okay, so any questions on either one of those? Usually when we do an amendment, you have an attachment that says exactly what that amendment is. And I guess that's where we're sort of struggling up here today as the board.
And I would ask that we have Melanie follow up with Dave Knowles, because I think Dave provided this, or Lori?
He provided me the original, and he asked if I could change it for him, which I did. I went in and electronically modified it.
Can you tell us what you changed?
Yes, I can tell you exactly. It's only seven thousand per megawatt, there was a different calculation under two, and payment move tax.
Yeah.
And then I changed all of the years up a year in number one.
So, so there's where the problem is, Melanie, you took the original and reformatted it and call it amendment number one, which actually the original should stay there, and amendment should be an attachment that shows
Okay.
all that's changed.
Okay.
And I, I think that's where all of our confusion is today.
Okay.
So go back to the original one, make an amendment sheet, and we'll approve the amendment, and it will be attached to the original.
Okay.
Yeah, agreement.
Sorry, that was just his direction.
Yeah.
That's okay.
It's okay.
We'll get it.
But just getting me up to speed here is I'm looking for the, I'm not understanding because I don't have an amendment paper just to track that, so. Anyways, that's what we need to do.
I put amendment on there.
Yeah, but it does say amendment number one, but it's the whole, the whole agreement. Whenever you go to agreement and it's been amended, you can usually go to the back and find amendment one, two, three, or whatever.
Commissioner-elect Williams, after the first year, can read the original agreement, and then he'll have that page to see what's been amended.
Correct. All right, so... All right, so, so the other ones, this one here, obviously, this here, the.
The lease agreement?
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted that to be in your packet, Drew, or, excuse me, Todd just brought the original down. It just needs to be signed, everything else is signed, and then we can submit it. That was just for your records.
So, okay, this isn't part of our agenda?
No.
Okay.
It's already been hacked along.
So they signed it, we had already signed it and thanks for what I'm seeing here, Melanie.
It just needs to be recorded and we are set.
All right, we got it in the file with my other papers. All right, so that was just for information that it's been done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have left the Dolly Parton Imagination Library donation. We donated to that last year?
Yeah, we got the Wolf Depredation Funds.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I have a check mark by that, but, haven't been, Wolf Depredation Funds, thank you, Commissioner. This, there have been requests come out to us, Melanie says on the administratively with Wolf Depredation, this is for everybody. I said as the Commissioner, they've reached out from Laual County, they've had several depredations, their funds aren't even coming close to helping out the ranchers there, they have reached out to several counties, see if any other counties can release some of their depredation funds. Our group, through a poll, email poll, agreed to one thousand dollars, correct? Is that the process you use, Melanie? And to help Laual County out and their ranchers there. We have a total of three thousand and ours, our program that we have been set aside for was for bone pile, four thousand, I'm sorry, for bone pile cleanup. And there has been no rancher step up at this point, but it still leaves funds in there. So tomorrow, if the board agrees, we could give one thousand dollars to Laual County. And that's within, these funds are already a fund, we're in Department of Agriculture. If not used, they go back also, and this is within the guidelines for us, they'll transfer them over, I believe.
Okay.
Okay, sorry about missing that one. Plus, we have our couple additions. Uh, Dolly Parton Imagination Library donation. We donated last year to that, what are their requests this year?
Whatever we feel is best.
And was it, I want to say it was five hundred dollars, or was it fifteen hundred?
I think it was a thousand.
It was a thousand?
I think they asked for five and gave a thousand.
Yeah, and, and it's working very well. We had enough data here, not very long ago. So if we decide to do that, it'll probably be through the video lottery funds once again.
Yeah.
Okay. So up to the Oil CC, I had a call yesterday, Melanie was in training yesterday from Mr. Leibolt, he's in Christmas Valley, wanted to know if he needed to drive down yesterday to get this before us. I told him just send it to us electronically. I gave him my best shot, I gave it to the sheriff's office for review, we're the ones that signed it as a board, it's a new business. So if Melanie, she's working with Heather, the sheriff has gone training this week, conference of training, I'm not sure which one it is, if he has no objections to it, we could approve it tomorrow in our meeting. A lot of these come in and we, we go ahead and sign them and ratify them later, this one here hit the timeframe. So Melanie, if you can make sure the sheriff's reviewed it, if he, if they don't have no problem, and then get a hold of Mr. Leibolt and say he could actually have the signed copy tomorrow at our meeting, or we can get it to him, you know, work with Mr. Leibolt, if you will, figure out how it works for him and for us both. Another thing we have is a request came out for a letter of support to try to leverage funds for the Watson Creek Fire Area. We'd sent one of these letters out before on the very point, I believe, is a letter that we pretty much used a similar, Marty from the, NRCS, is it?
Farm Services Agency.
Uh, had reached out, and so Melanie has done that, signed it, just wanted the record to show that that letter will be going out and supports try to leverage funds. Department updates, we have IT department, that you, Melanie?
Yeah, so, um, I don't have a whole lot, sorry, um, to share at this time. I was approached by Mike Smith if we were interested in, um, in increasing our broadband capacity throughout the county, especially in rural areas. Um, he's been working with GOE to do mobile stations that are solar powered. I was thinking about it and during the winter, that might not be feasible because of the snow, but he just wanted to know if we're interested and I said yes, please. Um, and he will follow up with definite information on how the county can be involved and what exactly will happen in like a week or two.
I, I'm very interested in talking about solar, um, the solar has a battery backup usually for the days whenever it's.
Yeah.
Uh, snowing and everything, I just had quite some conversation on similar this last week. But I'm very interested for him, and obviously he'll be one of the new boards.
Yeah.
But definitely interested in hearing.
And I am as well, as you know.
We'll invite you back.
Oh, no, I mean, I think this is great, I, I have long believed that if, if we got with the right people, which number one, from the county, I think you're the right person to be having the discussions with potential entities that could provide the service in very, very detail, and that we actually don't have to get millions of dollars and do smoking near things that we can probably bring to the new board, something that's very reasonable, very doable, and we achieve the longstanding goal of giving the five grand throughout. So thank you for your work.
Yes, so, um, I'll just maybe elaborate a little bit more. So what their hope is that they'll be able to have mental health services offered in people's homes if they have broadband internet. So it'll be a community benefit though, because you can buy the service even if you're not that person. So if there's someone in AW who needs that service, well, they'll have it available in the areas, but it'll be available to the community, not just the people who are using the service. And then I think the batteries, he said in the prototype, last thirty-two hours, which they work, but I don't know, we don't have some sometimes.
Yeah, well, we do, but, you know, if we can get ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of the way there with, without all this other stuff, you know, tiers waiting, et cetera, et cetera, uncertainty.
Yeah.
Special grants, this and that, we will be providing the service that we should be providing for our citizens. And working with GOE, and I know the Eastern Oregon Association, Mike works with, president or chairperson is very involved in Oregon broadband, and the bottom line is, this is something that you as staff, you could take care of IT, are the appropriate one to be working on this and, and kind of getting the best situation to be able to display for our moving public. So thank you.
Well, thank you.
Do you agree with that, Commissioner?
Yes, I do. We ate on updates, that was it on IT, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I, I guess, um, a little bit of an update, I was off almost all last week, so I'm running a little bit behind, but yesterday I had another meeting as a cooperating agency with BLM, and the Commissioner that sits with BLM as they're going through the wilderness characteristics, the inventory's already been done, they're categorizing their inventory. So been sitting through those meetings as, Commissioner, you well know, we, as a board of commissioners, sent out a letter, we had a consultant put together for us with some opposition to some of the things with the wilderness characteristics. And as a cooperating agency, my guidelines, our guidelines, talking about some of the things that's going on as cooperating agencies are limited compared to as a board, but as a board, we sent out a letter opposing some of the direction they've been working on these. With that, so has the Cavillman and so has the, um, just in parallel with the solar water pump creation, has a cooperating agency. So there's two cooperating agencies that sent out a letter and one that's not a cooperating agency because they don't meet the status. So that's continuing process. I have meetings every other week at the Metlum with the BLM as cooperating agency. So still at the table there, still trying to make sure as they go, BLM goes through the process that our, everywhere from recreation to our permittees to just the general use of our public lands are protected for our citizens. And so I'm working on that. When, I guess with that said, also, this morning I met with Jeff Manterneck, others talking of natural gases, the natural gas is going to be coming into the plant there, working on exactly how that's going to look as far as the capacity that the county owns and for that to be able to be brought on up into the Lakeview area. So at this time, just pulling the parties together to negotiate the right way to make that happen. There's several different things, I've brought in the governor's office through the regional solutions, brought in a utility, I guess, a provider that's set at the table as we're talking, to try to have the best way to make that happen for Lakeview, just into the county. So those talks continue to go on, so I'm working on that. With that, I'm just running behind.
Well, appreciate you having that, putting that group together, and I think you're going to see the fruits of your labor at some point in time down the road a little bit, and it'll be good for the community at large and benefit the whole county ultimately, even though we don't have natural gas throughout, but it'll still be there.
Yes, we're, it's, we're getting closer every day. Closer every day. So that's all I have.
Yeah, I don't have anything.
All right, with that, we will turn at twenty minutes to eleven. And tomorrow we will be in Paisley at ten o'clock. Melanie, Dan will drive here and we'll give him a ride to Paisley tomorrow.